Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Herbstrein.
Here.
Mrs. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Mrs. Lang.
Here. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start with Section 2, Approval of Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the June 25, 2025 regular meeting minutes and the June 25, 2025 retention meeting minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Hennes, if you could call the board. Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Herbstrein.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
And that brings us to Section 3, Mr. Claris, for District and Community Announcements.
I mean, really, the announcement that I had this evening, it's Dr. Pyros' last Board of Education meeting, obviously she's retiring at the end of this month, so I just wanted to thank her again for all that she's done for our school district, me, myself, so many different roles, from coaching volleyball, all the way to teaching middle school, obviously, middle school assistant principal, elementary principal, learning resource supervisor, associate superintendent, I don't think I'm missing anything in there, maybe I am, but just want to thank her for that, wish her nothing but the best on this next step, and for all that she's done in so many different roles in our district, and so she's been a constant presence, I know we've had time to celebrate her in the last couple of months, but I wanted to bring this up today.
Thank you, thank you for everything, Dr. Claris, our meetings will not be the same. Thank you.
I also want, I just want to thank you. There's a reason the sun is not shining. So, you'll be missed. Absolutely, thank you.
Maybe before I go to the middle school, I also remember you gave my eyes from the meeting with the children, they were just like me. You're excited?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Next section is Public Participation. There isn't any. That will bring us to Section 5, Reports and Recommendations of the Treasurer. Before we move to Ms. Hennes, I just wanted to put a reminder out there that the board operates under a consent agenda, and each board member has received a copy of the agenda in advance of tonight's meeting, and had an opportunity to look over it and ask questions. And with that, we will move to Ms. Hennes.
Thank you very much, good evening, everyone. I'm happy to report that Monday, June, is closed, and the school year has been ended. We're working on serving anyone, some of the financial statements.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Section 5A, Financial Statements, Payments, Insurance for June 2025? Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hennes, if you could call the board. Mr. Herbstrein.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Mrs. Lang. Yes. And back over to Mr. Claris for Section 6, Recommendations of the Superintendent.
Yeah, thank you. For personnel this evening, I'm going to split it out, first items are A through I, and there are a number of items, individuals discontinuing employment, we have some individuals that will be starting with us as classified, staff members specified exempt, some transition days for one of our administrative assistants that will be starting with us, an item regarding summer programming, and then obviously, you're going to start to see some supplemental contracts for our fall seasons, we ramp off for school, and then finally, some stipends for kindergarten screening, and a resolution to amend our preschool psychologist contract to add additional time. So those are items A through I.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Section 6, Items A through I?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Hennes, if you could call the board. Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Herbstrein.
Yes.
Mrs. Lang. Yes.
And then in Item J, there are a number of tutors that are beginning, coming back to us at this time of year, so they're on for recommend, recommend approval for the 25, 26 school.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Section 6, Item J, Persons' Discontinuing Employment for 2025, 2026 school year?
Still moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I'd just like to note that there is a person on this list that is a very dear friend of the family, and when she was recommended last year at this time, I abstained, so I plan to do that again.
Thank you. Ms. Hennes, if you could call the board. Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Herbstrein. Mr. Gordon.
Abstained.
Mrs. Lang. Yes. And that brings us to Section 7, back to Mr. Claris for Recommendations of the Superintendent Policies.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Before I turn it over to the board for some of the feedback, I know that I mentioned that I requested tonight for policy 5136, Personless Communication Devices. Appreciate all the discussion we've had on this school year, I know we've been waiting for, as the law has come out, to get additional information that was included into the budget bill, and they had that in there, so, you know, the policy that was recommended by administration has stayed the same, I do believe it's within the scope of the law, and I also wanted to add just a couple of quick points, and I think it's, it's important to remember that this policy is still very restrictive and only talking about flexibility for our high school students in those targeted areas. We are going to continue prohibiting cell phones, PK through 8 in all areas, 9 through 12 in the classrooms, and we're looking at those targeted areas, that's what I wanted to get feedback on this evening. I think it's also important to remember that this new approach to prohibiting cell phones in our instructional periods in the high school is going to be a significant change during the instructional periods. The consistency to bring that about and to do that will be something that we will work on with our teachers and our, our staff, because I think that is going to be something that is going to be something that is going to be significant and impact our high school as it changes, and, and truthfully does mirror what the intended law is, to keep the phones away in the classrooms, and, and I believe that's important. Just other items with note, I did talk to administrative length, I don't feel that we are dealing with consistent cellphone issues in lunch, in study hall, in those areas, I think I've mentioned before, I think we see kids sometimes that are, truthfully, they are working, they're listening to music, we have less kids that are sleeping in study halls and things like that, where we sometimes had to work through that sometimes, it's not what you want to see, but we, we do that. I think it's really important to note too, that this, again, I go back to, it's a significant change, and I think it's one that's welcomed by our high school administration, I think it's, it is, in the classrooms, you know, it's, I'm, I'm a dad of a teenager, it's two now, actually, two now, my son just became one, well, no, he was one, he's 14 now, that's bad, I don't know my own kids anymore, so, but I'll say this, it's, it's challenging to grow up in today's societies as kids, and I can tell you, it's a lot, it's a lot harder to grow up, I think, than I had to grow up, we expect a lot out of them, there's a lot of change that they have to navigate on a regular basis, and I want to keep that in mind whenever we do something new, because I think it's our job to also listen to our kids, and I think, you know, everything happens for them at an accelerated pace, and I think we're aware of that, that's just the world they grow up in, and we need to be mindful of this, so, as I go back, this is a change for them, they're going to do well with the change, because that's how I have confidence in our administrative team, but I think we need to realize that the information that's coming at them, so much sometimes, and if we, we pull, pull that rug under, I, I have concerns on it. I think reality too, we've got to continue to work with them on being really responsible digital citizens in the real world, you know, I, I totally understand where this is going, the research behind it, why they're looking at the instructional periods the way they are, and I respect that whole art, and that's why I think this policy supports that, right? Clearly, I think though, we need to be mindful that when they leave us, whether they go to colleges, universities, some of those same places are going to expect them to use phones in classrooms, they're going to expect them to be able to manage that, not have those, and to work through that, so that, that's a reality we deal with a lot of times with everything that we do. You know, we've talked about this before, safety and security is another unfortunate topic that we've learned about, I know that's on the minds of parents, you know, when it comes to cell phones, and, you know, the last thing, I think it's just realistic, and in consultation with other superintendents, when you talk with other individuals what they're doing, the intent of the law, I understand within the, with, with the class periods, I think when you start to get into some of these areas with our older students, it, it tends to be an overreach, and that's just my opinion, I think it's going to take time away from what we need to do with our kids, and we're going to have staff in a managerial perspective, having to work with our students, and getting into battles, I need your phone, I need to do this, and that's not what we want to do, right? I think our students in those areas have been showing a level of respect that we, we will continue to monitor, our team understands that, and, you know, we have individuals who are there during those periods to really monitor those students and make sure that they're acting appropriate, and doing the things we need to do, and we've got to put trust in them, we don't need to put something else onto them that will make their jobs even harder, because I do believe that. So there's just some others that items to note, I do, I think the, the thing out, before getting some feedback from, from all of you, is that I really do believe, I don't want to minimize the impact of the change at the high school, and I think throughout this discussion, maybe that's happened a little bit, because it is significant. When you're looking at a consistent approach to, these phones are away, we're putting them away, we're not having them in there, so a student now goes from the vast majority of their day, they are going to go from one classroom to next, and it's going to be the same expectation, it's not going to be different, right? And I think we've had a little bit of that candidly now, but now that we're going to have a policy, no matter what, that would enforce something like that, that's going to provide us with the opportunity to really change what we see in those classroom periods, and I think ultimately, that's the intent of the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Well, sure. So, first of all, I, I appreciate the fact that we're going to be moving away from cell phones in the classroom, I think that is appropriate, and I think that will help, certainly from an academic standpoint. So, I, I, but I do want to reshare some of the things that I have shared with all of you already, but I, I just want to get this out there again, before the second reading, and, and taking a vote on this policy, just to give you one more chance to consider some of the things that I wanted to bring up. Not focusing on the academic aspect now, because I think that is being handled with the change in the policy and the prohibition in the classrooms, but I wanted to remind you that according to a 2022 Pew Research Study, nearly half of teenagers in that study said they are online almost constantly, and when not online, they are either thinking about the last time they were online, or the next time they can check their phones, social media accounts, et cetera. So I think maybe if we remove that distraction for the entire day, it's, it's out of sight, out of mind, so they're not thinking with 10 minutes left to go in class, I can't wait to get out of here so I can check my phone, or standing outside the classroom door, and perhaps a teacher saying, let's go, class is starting, put your phone. Following the introduction of front-facing cameras on smartphones in 2010, and Facebook's purchase of Instagram in 2012, a set of questions administered in surveys by the Program for International Student Assessment showed increases in student feelings of loneliness and friendlessness. I mentioned a book called The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Haidt, a lot of what the state of Ohio, I think, did legislatively is based in part on that book, I know Governor DeWine cited that book specifically for some of the things that he wanted to see done in the state of Ohio. And by the way, I, I do, I'm not sure that the intent of the law was specifically just to prohibit phones in the classrooms, because when I looked at Senate Bill 158, I think the intent of that piece of legislation was to prohibit phones for the entire school day. But according to Jonathan Haidt, as soon as teens began carrying smartphones to school and using social media regularly, including during breaks between classes, they found it harder to connect with their fellow students, they were quote, "forever elsewhere." We know from internal documents released in 2021 that Facebook intentionally used behaviorist techniques to hook teenagers and keep them on their platform for as long and as often as possible. TikTok has been investigated for the same thing. Furthermore, according to a, a report from Gallup and the Institute for Family Studies, teenagers who spend five or more hours per day in total on social media are 60% more likely to experience suicidal thoughts or harm themselves, they are nearly three times more likely to have negative body image, and 30% more likely to report sadness. Even the U.S. Surgeon General said, "Social media is creating, quote, 'a profound risk of harm to the mental health and well-being of adolescents.'" So that leads me to question if we as a school district should contribute in any way to these significant health problems. On the other hand, by the way, key findings from a recent Pew Research survey noted that 72% of teenagers said they often feel, quote, "peaceful" when they don't have their phone, 74% said they feel happy. Couple more reasons I think maybe we should give them a break from their phones for the entire day. And just as a reminder, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce did encourage schools to go totally phone-free for the instructional day. I supplied the board with, and the administration with some, with information to a DEW meeting back in June, and during that meeting, they indicated that schools that have eliminated PCDs for the entire day are not only seeing a reduction in the number of behavioral issues, but an increase in academic benchmarks as measured by GPA and standardized test results. That's prohibiting for the entire day, and I think improving GPA and standardized test results, I think that's maybe our primary responsibility as a board. But just to share a few more thoughts with you before I wrap it up. I think for students who are not addicted to their phones, an all-day prohibition will not be an issue for them, but I think an all-day prohibition may instead help exactly the students who need a break from their phones the most. I toured the high school, middle school campus one day in spring, and I noticed the, the difference in noise levels between the high school cafeteria and the middle school cafeteria, it was amazing, it was really.
Not sure if principals believe it's amazing, but yeah, there's a, there is a gigantic difference when you walk through the doors.
You open the door to the middle school cafeteria, and it hits you like a wall.
You're in the fun house.
And I know that you can, you can attribute part of that difference to different maturity levels, but I think also, you have to recognize that students in the middle school were also engaging with each other, because no cell phones are permitted there. At the high school, you do have students who are in their cellphone silos, and I think it might be better to create an environment where they can engage more with their peers. Lastly, during the pandemic, for health-related reasons, we told students they had to wear a mask and stay six feet away from everyone, and we did this with little to no scientific evidence as to the efficacy of such practices. Here, we have a substantial and growing amount of evidence demonstrating significant health harms and risks to young people that spend too much time on their smartphones, and so again, why should we as a district contribute in any way to something that can be detrimental to our students? I know that I cannot, so I will not support this policy, and I would just encourage other board members to rethink this and.
Just one item to note, I, you know, in my opinion, I'm not doing anything by recommending this detrimental to students, I, I appreciate your opinion, but I do want to be clear in that, I, our students are my number one priority in all of these, I think, you know, I understand the research, I've read The Anxious Generation, I respect it, I also think, you know, and I understand what you said about the law, but as we know, a lot of times, laws are written by people who aren't in positions to understand what's going on, where they're writing it for, there's a lot of people writing a lot of laws right now that are not, that don't solicit feedback from, say, educators on those laws. You know, I can't argue with, you know, certain things, of course, but I think sometimes you also have to be mindful of doing everything at once while seeing how it works and, and adjusting. The, the other item I just want to clarify, I can't assume that all of our kids are on social media every time either, I think that's, I mean, I'm sure it happens at times, but I can't cast an assumption that every one of our students is running to their phone to do that, right? And so I understand, you know, the research and where it is, and I, and I certainly respect your opinions and everybody's opinions on this topic, it's an important topic, right? That's why it's getting brought up, brought up by the governor and brought up the laws, but I do think there is a way to move and approach this in the way we're going to do it, and then continue to, to continue to monitor, right? Continue to monitor it, we could come out of this and say, you know, we, we are seeing benefits and we understand, and maybe we, we do need to open it up more to other areas as we continue to go down the road, I mean, I think sometimes you have to do that in order to see where you want to go, but I, I understand the point you're making.
I understand, I'm so amazed, echoing some of what Mr. Gordon said, when I ran for office, I said, "Try to do as best for our students," and when I look at the communications between them, direct communications, when I look at the test scores that come up, I believe this is not the way that I would like to see this going, but as we've always done in the past, once the board is fully, we've always come in and seen it, so that's, we have a critical observer. Part of it may be something we've not acknowledged, or I'm the oldest guy in the room, and I don't have children, I may have made a different, you know, this came up during the years my kids went to school, but as I've seen, it is going, I would also like to support it, make some wise, and it comes, we've always kind of been much more aware of the world than we have.
I just have a couple of thoughts too, first of all, I appreciate the discussion on both ends, and I respect the discussion on both ends, I will be supporting it, I, I think it should go without saying that everyone on the board wants to do what's best for our kids, and no matter what decision we make, it, I, of course I want what is best for our kids. As someone who has worked in a school, as someone who does a 22 and a 24 graduate of our high school, I think that we are talking about such a small period of time, if we are talking about just study hall and lunch, a lot of our kids don't have study halls, my kids didn't, they got early release and other things instead of study hall, so I think you're talking about a short period of time with only our high school kids, I know that back when my daughter was in middle school, I was telling Mr. Claris, she pulled her phone out of her book bag in between classes, and our teacher walked up behind her and took it right out of her hand and brought it right to the office, so I know that at the middle school, they do not have their phones. So since we are talking about just high school kids in a shorter period of time during the school day, then I am okay with the recommendation, I also feel, like Mr. Claris said, we can keep looking at that, but to make that decision and put that, if you're talking about not having them at all during the school day, and I think you're expecting them either not to bring them to school, or to leave them in their book bag, and for most kids, those two things are not going to happen, they're not going to leave their phones at home, and if they're in their book bags, they're going to be tempted to bring them out, and who, what administrator is going to spend so much time, I, I think that their efforts, the efforts of the administrators could be spent somewhere more productive than just policing phones all day. So I think for now, having to take them and put them in a cubby in the classroom is a big change, and I, I think it will make a difference, I mean, it's a great start. That's all I got. Okay, well, if that's all, then we'll move.
I appreciate you listening. No, thank you, thank you guys for the discussion, and yeah, I think go back to what I said, it's a very challenging topic.
It is. Okay. Section 8, back to Mr. Claris for operations.
Yes, thank you. The number of items on here, A through U, are very typical for this time of the year, they are a number of our annual contracts that go on prior to the start of school year, these deal with a number of curriculum items, our HVAC maintenance agreement, items regarding our school resource officers, a new, our communication platform, some Power School translation services, membership to Ohio School Council, and a number of items that, a number of contracts in various manners that support our students with special needs, and then we also have a, an item on there regarding St. Brendan's through PSI Associates because of the various fundings that they use for that, so those are items A through U.
Thank you. There's a lot on there. Is there a motion to approve Section 8, Items A through U, Recommendations of the Superintendent Operations?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Hennes, if you could call the board. Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Herbstrein.
Yes.
Mrs. Lang. Yes. That brings us to Section 9, Board of Education, and we will start with Committee Reports. Mr. Herbstrein, do you have a report?
No, just, I've got one more thing to, 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 to break down, because I'm going to talk about what's changed, the history of the university, the prior show, parade, and then the band that played, Dawson.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, do you have a report?
I do not.
I also do not, Mrs. Murphy, do you have a report? Okay, that brings us to Section 3, there are a couple of things to vote on under new business, before I get to that, I just wanted to bring up that Mr. Brown is not able to make the Wednesday, August 6 meeting due to our work commitment, he requested that we change the date so that he doesn't have to miss two meetings in a row, we were looking at Monday, August 4th, or Thursday, August 7th, if we can all be able to hold those days, preferably Monday? Preferably Monday, August 4th.
Kiwanis, that you mean?
We don't have to decide right now, I just, we want to let this go.
Monday the 4th or Thursday the 7th?
Thursday the 7th.
Yeah, we have our retreat on the, um, so, Ms. Ram's on the 6th, we have our Tuesday, the 5th, so obviously it leaves Monday and Thursday, because we're not going to do it on a Friday, so.
When, what days are the retreat?
So, Mr. Ram has a work commitment, I believe, on this, on the day of the board member, the 6th.
Yes.
Ours is on, our district has Tuesday.
Oh, I see.
So, Monday, Thursday.
So that was Monday or Thursday.
And, and the reason why you probably wouldn't want to go into the next week, because we already have another meeting on the 20th, wouldn't make sense.
Gotcha.
I can be available that Thursday. Um, that is my preference, but I can be available on Monday if I need to be.
Okay.
Okay. So you can just let us know, Mr. Garden?
Okay.
Once you check your schedule.
Do, do you know what your schedule is?
Uh, I think on Thursday, I think, uh, if, there's a board meeting on show.
On Thursday or on Monday? Yes.
I mean, you're the president, it's like, you're the president.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think I've missed a meeting so far, and I hate it.
Yeah, let me see if we're, because I think Kiwanis is meeting that night, and I, on Monday.
On Monday.
On Monday the 4th. And I know we're trying to, uh, get squared away as far as what Kiwanis is going to do for homecoming on the 23rd, so.
Okay. So you'll let us know?
But I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Um, okay, that brings us to Item B. And it's the, um, contract addendum for the treasurer. So if I could get a motion to approve Item B, is that it, Katie? Just do them separately like this?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Is there a motion to approve Item B, the treasurer contract addendum?
Someone.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hennessy, if you could call the board? Mr. Herbster?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mrs. Lehman? Yes. And then we will need a motion to approve Item C.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hennessy, if you could call the board? Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Mr. Herbster?
Yes.
Mrs. Lehman? Yes. And then one more motion to approve Item D, which is the superintendent contract.
Smoothly.
Is there a second?
Second.
If you could call the board? Mr. Herbster?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Mrs. Lehman? Yes. Thank you. Um, I'm not aware of any unfinished business or correspondence. We do have an executive session this evening with the board, um, for personnel matters, including appointment, promotion, dismissal, and compensation of a public employee. And just a reminder, we will only reconvene to a German meeting, and there will be no action taken. Uh, is there a motion to enter into executive session at 6:34?
Someone.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hennessy, if you could call the board? Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Herbster?
Yes.
Mrs. Lehman? Yes. We are, it's going to be a little bit, it's not.
Last one, you're done.
And the rain stopped and the sun came out.
You're, you're going to be bored on Wednesday nights.
I can call you.
What'd you think?
I said, I can call her. I'll catch you.
So what is physically your last day?
July 31st.
Mm-hmm. A couple more things, yeah.
We'll stop, we'll stop anything.
Thank you. And thank you again. I, I don't know if I had a chance to tell you that the board sent a very lovely flower arrangement today. Thank you so much. Thanks. Really appreciate it. So, yeah.
He said I would try to schedule one more meeting before July 4th.
A special meeting.
Well, we can make this, we can, this is, uh, on his fourth, we can make it the last week, we could, well, actually, I, actually, for real, we have vacation then, so we can't do that. I got it too. I've enjoyed getting to know you.
Enjoy, enjoy your time.
You too. Time, your family.